Mary, let us convene the, what is it, January 29th meeting of the Concord Select Board. Please call the roll.
I don't need to call the roll, Henry, because we're all here.
Everyone is here. Yes, welcome, Linda. What a treat to see you back in person.
Thank you.
You're welcome. This, the minutes should show the return in person of this Escobedo. No? So, let's proceed then with the consent agenda.
Actually, public comment? Do you have public?
Oh, yes, we do have public. Do we have public comment for 15 minutes? Seeing none?
Uh, there's one.
Well, no, I, so, guys, I'm new to this. This is Carl Leibig. I'm on the White Pond Task Force. This is where we kind of chime in for 15 minutes. I'm sorry, I'm new to this meeting format.
Hmm?
So, our two co-chairs can't make it, but Beth and Evan could not make the call that Jennifer Parker and myself are here.
Hold on, wait.
And we're just following up on the White Pond Task Force.
Mr. Leibig, hold on.
Hello?
Hold on. Because if you want to talk about the Warner's Pond Task Force.
White Pond.
Oh, the White Pond.
Right.
Is that on the agenda?
No.
The White Pond.
So, this is public comment?
It's on the consent agenda.
Huh? It's on the consent agenda.
Oh.
So, how do we deal with that? Because we're not going to have any discussion of it.
Okay.
So, do we need to take, if we have somebody who wants to talk about it, do we need to take it off the consent?
No, we don't need to take it off the consent.
All right. Go. Proceed then. Normally, we don't.
Yeah, it's a simple, we just wanted to follow up.
Normally?
Jennifer, I just wanted to follow up, and the team wants to follow up to see what the next steps are, whether you guys need additional info, just how we can be proactively implementing the recommendations we have. And again, just really asking what the next steps are. I mean, Jennifer and I, I see Josh from Friends of White Pond is on too, if you have any other questions. But that's the main thing. What are the next steps that we can pursue to implement our recommendations?
Well, thank you. Do we have any other public comment matters?
Yes.
Yes?
Josh Galper.
Josh, Mr. Galper, please.
Thank you very much. Hello. I'd like to comment briefly on the White Pond Task Force, what's being referred to as the Minority Report, which was a second report sent in by a couple of task force members. In that report, the members stated that Friends of White Pond should be responsible for some testing in the pond. I don't believe that that's realistic at this time, and wanted the board to be aware of that, that the pond at this point does not have the resources to be able to take on that activity. Thanks very much. That's all.
Thank you.
Move to approve the consent agenda?
Well, yes.
I just, oh, no, you have another.
Do we have another? Jennifer Parker? Ms. Parker?
Yes, thank you. I was a member of the White Pond Task Force, and I would just like to second Carl's comment that we would very much like to see the recommendations that we came up with over the course of a year implemented, and they were voted on by a margin of five to one. So, I would, I think it's important that the recommendations we came up with be implemented in order to safeguard the future of the pond. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Do I recall correctly that we did vote when we disbanded the White Pond Task Force, that we recommended that a member of the town staff be designated to receive comments or to consider further, any further proceedings that are necessary?
We discussed that. I don't think we actually said that explicitly. We did discuss it.
All right. Well, at least it's been discussed.
And we also discussed, at our last meeting, there was a whole presentation given by the White Pond Task Force and the Minority Report.
Right.
And we discussed some of the testing that's being covered in the budget, some of the other recommendations that the town manager said she'll look into. So, I think those are some of the next steps.
Okay, thank you. All right, Mary?
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Second?
I'd like to pull off the item, the gift from the Concord Carlyle Fields and the amount of $50,000.
Right, so the, we will consider the consent agenda without that gift acceptance. Is that correct?
At this time, yes.
All right. Is there a second to that motion as amended?
Second as amended.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. This makes it a lot easier, doesn't it?
Sure does.
Thank you, Linda, for being here.
So, will we have an opportunity to talk about why I pulled it off?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, I think what we'd really like to know is who's going to have the authority for that, managing that particular gift, and specifically what it's for.
And to elaborate on that somewhat, the gift specifically deals with the money that is received to be used for maintaining the artificial turf. And under the intermunicipal agreement, the town has the option of either maintaining artificial turf or replacing it with natural grass. And so, acceptance of this gift would, might dictate the choice, or at least dictate the choice that the town would be make in terms of what the expense and environmental consequences were. So, it's something that I think we want to leave open to have further discussion on.
Mm-hmm. But I think Linda's raising a good question. Who, under whose authority?
Right.
Who's in charge of making the decisions on the Doug White Field?
That's what we're not clear on.
So, that is a good question. I'm not sure that I have a full answer for you this evening. I think this is something, if the board wants to take it up, we'd like to take some time to put a report together.
Okay.
Because this is something that I'm not completely sure of, other than I know that the town is responsible for maintaining it. But the funding, where the funding is coming from, all of the different groups that are involved in funding and use of that field, we'd like the opportunity to look at further.
I think that would be a good idea, because there is an article at town meeting that, I think, about turf fields, if I'm remembering correctly?
Yes, it was a moratorium. However, it didn't apply to this, because it's a district.
No, no, at this coming uptown meeting, aren't there some?
Not this town meeting.
On the Capitol.
Not this town meeting.
No, but there's some questions that are out there that have to be delivered.
There are, there are questions, and we have received some correspondence on it.
Right, right, okay.
And...
To me, there are two issues. One is the turf fields. I mean, do we want to continue to maintain artificial turf, or do we want to replace them with grass? That's one issue. And the other issue is the money. You know, how many funds do we have? What's, what are the balances in these funds? Who's responsible for, you know, spending money against these funds? I think getting clear on both of those would be helpful. So, yeah, I would like to put this up to another, I agree with Linda, and I'd like to do that.
So, should we be taking some kind of look back? And do we want to say how far back we want to look in terms of the maintenance and funds?
The original agreement goes back to 2007, I believe.
Yeah, do we want to do the whole thing?
And it was a 25-year agreement between the town and the regional school district.
Mm-hmm.
So, we'll take a look at it.
Yep.
Okay, good. And we'll thank the, thank the donors for their generous offer of making a contribution, but before we accept it, we need to decide.
Hope we're not jeopardized.
Huh? Before we accept it, we need to decide either whether it's appropriate for us to accept it, and or whether the donors might be willing to modify their conditions imposed on it. So, anyway, moving on.
Henry, if I just may follow up with an additional?
You should get a lot of time, Linda, because you missed a lot.
Yeah, it's difficult to interject online.
Yes, it is.
When I'm at the meetings each time. I would generally like to know also, just be reminded, I guess it's more of a fact, who is actually acknowledging our donors when these wonderful gifts come in? I know that there's a preliminary, something that comes from, from...
Anthony is pointing to himself.
Yeah.
And he is the one who actually submitted the memo asking us to approve the gift.
Yeah, after the Select Board accepts a donation, we send it out with thank you as well with our tax verification number.
Yeah, terrific. And I was aware of that aspect. And then, are the individual departments or whoever does is the recipient, the department that's the recipient of the money, are they also acknowledging?
They often do. I couldn't say that in every case, but they often do. And I, I know, for instance, the fire chief will always copy me on a response, so I know that in his case, he is.
That's great. Yeah, because I've seen the notices that go out from you or the acknowledgements, they're pretty antiseptic, so to speak. You know, just meeting the basic requirements. So, yeah, I think it's important. I'm sure many are. I just didn't know if that was across the board or not. Thank you.
Thank you.
Before we move on, speaking of thanking people, one of the items on the consent agenda is the resignation of the town accountant. We'd like to thank her for all the work that she's done over the years. Mary Barrett, right? It's wonderful.
But she's taking another position with the town.
Yeah, but it's not as much responsibility, if I understand it correctly.
Correct. So, she, she will be stepping down and assuming the role of the assistant town accountant, which is a position that she held for several years before she was promoted to town accountant. She's been town accountant, I think she said, 10 or 12 years in the letter. And she's not quite ready to retire, but she's ready to do something less than what she's been doing over the last decade. So, she will serve in this position until a successor is appointed. And you might recall that the Select Board makes the appointment of the town accountant, one of a few positions that you appoint directly.
And this has nothing to do with the aggravation and frustration she experienced by my delays in signing the warrants every week?
It's one of her jobs.
I'm, yeah, I'm not going to speak on her behalf.
All right.
She's ready to do less for the town of Concord.
And it may be my, I may be responsible for that.
No, you're not responsible.
One question I have about the consent agenda, which has nothing to do with whether or not we accept the gift of the equipment shed on Nurse Nak Hill, is, does that open up space on that cell tower for another carrier so that we might be able to solicit another carrier to help us solve our cell, cell service concerns by locating on the tower, which is now having that one carrier vacated?
We are, I will get back to you on that one.
Okay, thank you.
There's been discussion about it.
But it is, it may be an opportunity waiting to happen. All right, so that, does that finish the consent agenda and all the related things? We have to keep in mind that we do have a public hearing that's starting at 6:30, and we have to finish that by 7 o'clock when we adjourn to the caucus. All right, so, Town Manager's Report.
Sure, thank you, and good evening. We did circulate a status report late this afternoon. You probably have not yet had a chance to look through it. There were just a couple of things that I wanted to highlight, and then I was hoping to take a few minutes to ask Deputy Town Manager Megan Zamuto to provide a quick update on the closure of MCI Concord, just sharing the information that we know, because we have received lots of questions and hearing, lots of different things circulating around in the community. So, again, just a couple of items that I wanted to note. We have been busy filling vacant positions. We have recently hired a recreation director who will be starting within the next month. Recently filled the BD General Manager position, Jenny Cicardo. She's actually a resident of Concord. She started with us within the last couple of weeks. We have an offer out to a facilities director. That position has been vacant since July, so we're thrilled to have a very qualified candidate hopefully coming on board sometime in February. I did want to note that we have two retirements, and we probably have more, but the two that came to mind, I wanted to mention that Denise Caruso, the Administrative Assistant in the Police Department, long-tenured in her position. She is retiring, I believe, at the end of this week. And also Claudia Curran, who holds a similar position at the Council on Aging, is retiring, again, I think at the end of this week. Both women have been with the town for a very long time, provided a great service to their respective departments, and they will be missed by, by their colleagues. I did want to note that we have been undertaking a lot of training, but specifically, the Fire Department continued with their ice rescue training this past week. You may have heard about, two weeks ago, we did have an ice rescue event. We would caution all residents to be careful when approaching ice, because that, that particular event that we had down at Balls Hill was significant. It was a significant response. I think a lot of, a lot of things went right for that person and her pet to be saved. So, we appreciate.
That is a frequent circumstance where somebody goes out on the ice to save a dog, and the dog survives, and the rescuer does not, unfortunately.
Yeah. The only other item I want to mention before turning over to Megan is that we had representatives from police and fire attend a MEMA-coordinated public safety planning meeting for the 250th. That was last week. Notable outcomes are that MEMA has assigned a staff member to plan and coordinate the event, and the staff member that they assigned is the same person who plans the response for the Boston Marathon. So, I think that we are in very good hands. And with that, I will turn my remaining time over to Megan.
Thank you. And I have one housekeeping item. At the last meeting, the board asked for an update on parking meters, and the, I want to share that the engineering team is putting together a scope of services, a scope of work for the removal and repair. And we're going to, once that's complete, we'll decide if it's something we can do in-house, or if we have to go out to get another vendor to remove and repair the pavement for where those are taken out. So, I'll be sure to update you along the way.
One, one thing occurs to me on that one is that that seems to be a project that can be, one that is, can be performed on an, as available basis for our own staff, because there's so enormous urgency about it. And if it could be done piecemeal while public works employees have an hour or two of extra time, they might be able to just knock them off one by one.
Okay, thank you. And thanks for allowing a few minutes to talk about MCI Concord. We had some big news last week that we're still processing around here. And I'm just going to cover a couple of things. What do we know right now? Talk for a minute about master planning, some recommendations on communication. I'll show you some maps and discuss next steps. So, what do we know right now? We know that the Massachusetts Correctional Institution, MCI Concord, is scheduled to close on June 30th, 2024. This was outlined in the governor's budget in FY '25 Budget Recommendation. It's in Section 107, and it has a couple pages, if folks want to look it up themselves and see exactly what, what the language is. We know that the Division of Capital Asset Management and Maintenance, also known as DCAM, will facilitate the sale, lease, or transfer of the property. And also, some big news for us is that DCAM, this language that DCAM may transfer the water treatment facility to the town of Concord for a direct public use. So, how will the state dispose of the property? We don't know yet. The budget language outlines a few different options. One is a standard competitive process for disposing of public property, so that's through procurement. And the second is something called a sales partnership agreement. And so, we are learning about what that means right now, and it's some type of partnership between the state and the municipality. So, we don't have concrete answers at this point about what their, what their plans are, but we want to be, make sure we're ready and willing to partner with the state. So, if they approach us, and we want to be able to prove that we can work together on shared goals, and make sure we're advocating for what's really in Concord's best interest. We know that there's a lot of momentum right now around the Route 2 Rotary. There was a study recently done by Mastod on the Route 2, on Route 2, and the study examined existing traffic and safety data. Mastod identified some conceptual alternatives that will address multimodal improvement opportunities, and they're looking to address traffic congestion. So, we don't know if these conceptual alternatives were designed knowing that MCI Concord could be, you know, disposed of or not. And we have some meetings later this week, and we hope to learn more. But it's possible that they didn't include this opportunity, but things may change when, you know, this state property is available. So, more to come on that. We don't know really what the state's major plans are for the site, but we do have a few quotes from the governor, and we have her budget. So, you know, she says at one point that she spoke with the lieutenant governor for a long time about identifying state properties, that we could repurpose and use for housing for other things, Haley said. She didn't say specifically what she envisions for the site. But she did talk about, let's move it a little bit, that the purpose that it's being used for right now doesn't really right-size to the moment or the needs that we face. So, from the outside in, it looks like she might be interested in seeing housing at the site. That is what we know right now. So, for development opportunities like this, there's usually some type of master planning process. And this is different from the town's envisioned Concord 2030 Master Plan. This is a site-specific layout of uses. And so, how this master plan could occur and who is driving this, we are not sure. But, you know, it's kind of the theme through this, is it's critical that we're ready with a list of our needs and what we can accommodate, so that we are prepared to have a seat at the table to discuss the future of the site. For example, if, if housing is being discussed, it would be helpful for us to know internally, you know, how many units could we accommodate without having to build a new school? Like, what are the, what is the type of growth that the community is interested in seeing? And what can we accommodate with our infrastructure? With something such high stakes as this, communication's really critical. It's really important that we, we speak using one voice. I think mixed messaging could cost us an opportunity here. So, we want to be prepared and unified, so that the state and legislators understand our priorities. A group of town employees met this morning to talk about this opportunity. We plan to get together on a regular basis, and I imagine I will provide updates to the board when requested, so that it's a transparent process and everyone's aware of the information that we know and then what we don't know. So, I have a few maps here. I just, we had our GIS team put together, this is an aerial, if you can see, I think you can see on here where, where MCI Concord is. But we have a few maps that show the zoning, they show wetlands. This purple circle here is the half-mile radius of the West Concord commuter rail station. I have a few different layouts, and we're working on a frequently asked questions, which is basically the things we know and don't know that I just went over. And we'll put some of these maps on our webpage, so that it's a landing page for members of the community to visit, to find out when things have been updated and changed. So, we will have more information about a webpage soon, but this, this is an interesting, we'll start on this map for one second. I don't know if you can see the cursor on here. I think you can. I just, to clarify here, so this is, this yellow is MCI Concord, yellow circled or outlined. And then, the blue outlines are all of the state-owned other parcels in the area. So, there's, there's a lot to think about when you're, when you're looking at, right now, we're talking about MCI Concord, but these, these are the other parcels that are kind of on the docket to be discussed, I think. So, that is it for me. I'm happy to answer any questions. You know as much as I know now, and I'm happy to come back at any time to discuss this further.
Mary?
Thank you so much, Megan. That's really helpful. I do have some questions, and you may not know the answer. That's fine. So, if this is in the budget, and it sounds like they've been talking about it for a while, but somehow, nobody knew about it. Do you know, like, how long they've been working on it, or what happened, why we're just finding out? And, and are they really going to be done? DCAM is really going to be done with this by June 30th? I mean, it just seems really sudden and rushed.
Sure. I, so, I guess to answer your last question, DCAM won't be done with it, June, at the end of June.
Right.
I think that the plan is for the, the use to stop, for the prison to be, to cease operations at the end of the fiscal year. But I anticipate the transfer of this property to be a multi-year endeavor.
That makes much more sense.
And, and for how long it's been discussed, I, I don't know. I think that in reading the articles that were put together and the quote, it sounds like they had been looking to identify properties that could have other uses, but I don't know when that conversation started.
Sure.
Throughout the budget process.
Okay, a couple of other questions. Does it include only the prison itself, or does it include the farm?
So, we don't have a list of parcels, but they have named it in the budget as MCI Concord, which is the name of just the, that prison that was outlined in yellow, not the farm.
16 acres or something?
It's 50 acres or 51. Yes.
Because when you're looking at Route 2, if that farm is still there, that's going to be a whole different project than, yeah, so we don't know.
Still don't know, yeah.
All right. And you said that DCAM may transfer the wastewater facility to the town, or they will be transferring?
May.
May, okay. And transferring, does that mean we pay, or we don't know?
We don't know.
We don't know. Okay. Well, thank you. That's still a lot of information. Thank you very much.
And I assume we don't know whether that facility is up to
Current.
Environmental standards, and what capital investment would be needed in order to make it usable for the town's use?
We don't have a number for what would be needed, but there would need to be significant improvements to the facility. I think there's been a little bit of a lack of investment. It hasn't been used to its full capacity in recent years, and so, there, there would need to be an investment to, to improving that facility.
And the state probably can cut more corners than the town can in compliance.
It does have an, an active and in effect discharge permit. So, it is, it is operating, and it is legally operating.
It's a good, it's a good deal.
What's the gallon capacity of that treatment?
It is permitted at something between 300,000 and 400,000 gallons per day. I think, I think closer to 300,000.
Okay. I have a question about, you mentioned one voice, and I think that's a great thing. And that's one voice when we're negotiating with DCAM, right? Did I understand that correctly, or?
Yes, I think, I think that it'd be helpful for folks that have questions or information to share to go through the town manager's office. I, I think it's probably less effective having different bodies in town trying to connect with different levels of state government. I think it could be a little confusing.
Good. That's very good advice. Thank you.
Has the state provided any kind of contact to town staff for getting answers to some of these questions that we obviously have?
Not yet. We are, we're reaching out. We have, we have a call into Mass Development, and, you know, the lieutenant governor called his town manager after the announcement. And so, we have some folks we're starting to reach out to, but do we have a point of contact on this initiative? No, not yet.
I guess I'm also wondering, does, does the fact that it's been submitted as part of the governor's budget mean that it'll actually end up being implemented, or do governor's budget mean that it'll actually end up being implemented, or does the legislature end up weighing in before any of this really happens?
The legislature will, will weigh in, certainly. But I have to double-check on the authority, but it's my understanding that the governor's planning on closing the facility, so.
Yeah. I mean, it's understandable that the, that the governor could change the operations level of the facility.
Right.
That's a, there's a big step to be made between that and actually divesting of the property.
That's a good point.
I, I also forgot to ask. It looked like part of the property is within the MBTA Community Zoning. So, the half-mile?
So, that is, sorry to cut you off, but, the, part of the property is within a half-mile of the West Concord train station. That hasn't, that area has not been identified as an MBTA Community Zoning that's going before town meeting.
And it can't be, as long as it's state property, can it?
That's right. But, but if you're looking for, if you're looking at this as, you know, here's, here's a property that is in walking distance to the rail trail and the, the commuter rail, that's just to kind of identify the proximity to the multimodal transportation that this, this, this parcel presents.
Right. I'm also looking at, we're coming into the public hearings for the town meeting, and so all of these questions will be coming up.
It wouldn't be, it wouldn't be able to be considered at this juncture.
Okay.
And speaking of public hearing, it is now six-thirty, and, or should we, should we convene the public hearing, and then we can carry this, carry on this discussion if necessary after the caucus?
Sure.
Okay. All right. Mary, do we have a motion to open up the public hearing on the, on the location permit?
Well, actually, I don't.
No.
Move to open the public hearing for the grant of location request for a gas main petition for National Grid at 398 Simon Willard Road.
Thanks.
Second.
Or any, is anybody in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you. All right. The hearing is open. Is there anyone here to present the?
Mary from National Grid is on soon.
All right. Thank you.
Good evening. This is Mary Mulroney from National Grid. And National Grid respectfully requests your consent to extend the existing two-inch plastic main four hundred and eighty feet with two-inch plastics to serve House Number 398 Simon Willard Road in Concord.
All the materials are in the package for tonight's meeting.
I have some questions.
Yes. Are, are you done in the opening, your opening remarks and ready to deal with questions, Mary?
Yes, please.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. So, this is an extension of a gas line to Service One property, right?
Yes.
And they're going to be using this for heat and?
Um, yes.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Yes. I believe heat, hot water.
So, this might be one of the last ones we get, right? If we do the fossil-free fuel pilot.
Maybe that's why the application's being made now.
Did I understand that correctly?
Well, I don't, I mean, I don't know. Is, this is a new service. It's not, isn't the fossil-free fuel related to renovations, new construction?
This house was just renovated.
This is a new construction.
This is a total renovation of a home there.
Okay.
There may be a scenario where you get a request like this for a folk, someone that wanted to switch. You know, I mean, it's, it's, I don't think the fossil-free fuel will prevent requests in the future. You may get less, but.
Right, right.
But wait, I thought the fossil-free fuel, I have a hard time with that.
I know.
Fossil-free fuel meant that, maybe I just don't understand it, but I thought it meant that you couldn't use fossil fuels for renovations or new construction. And this is, in fact, a major renovation. So, I guess I'm wondering why, did this come in before the, before the deadline, or is this something, so why, I'm confused.
Well, I think there could be a minor renovation.
This was a major renovation.
Right, I know. So, this one's coming in, I think, before the deadline.
I'm also imagining a situation where you could be looking to install an emergency generator or something like that.
Well, that's what I'm wondering, because I asked, and it was heat.
But has the actual, has the actual legislation been passed?
That's a good question.
And, and then the legisla, or the, the amendment of our own bylaw, which hasn't been passed yet, which even if passed, would have to then be approved by the Attorney General, I believe does define major renovation by dollar expenditure, doesn't it?
We were part of a pilot, though. What does that mean? I guess I'm confused.
It's not in effect yet. It goes in.
When will that be in effect?
I believe it's March, but I'll confirm.
Okay. So, this might be one of the last ones. Okay. So, how, how long does, how long does it take to, to do this? The reason I ask is, that road is used quite a bit, it's right on a public trail, and that road is used quite a bit, quite a bit of traffic for a road that you wouldn't, you wouldn't expect it. But there is quite a bit of traffic there. There's a off-street parking lot for people that use the Simon Willard Trail. So, how long is this going to be under construction?
There are very strict limitations in the application itself. They call for opening and closing the street within one day, and the placement of steel plates and so on. It's, it's, it's been very, I think, very carefully structured to minimize the.
I'm just asking, how, how many days will this be, will this be in? Because, yes, you can have, what I read was that they were going to have a pedestrian way available, but that the street would be closed, because the street's going to be torn up, right? So, do, so, Mary, do you know how long this will take?
The, 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 for, this, just to give you a little background on this, the homeowner applied for this grant of location well over a year ago, and it's, it's finally coming up now. But in, in, to your question, it could be for a generator, too. But this part of the Simon Willard Road is on the no-outlet part. It's at the dead end on the cul-de-sac, at the very, very end. So, he is.
I know. I'm very, I'm very familiar with this area. I prac, I go there a couple of times a week. So, yes. And, but I'm telling you that there's a lot of traffic there in the day, because it's a popular place for people to go and park and walk their dogs at the Simon Willard Trail. So, I'm wondering, how long will this be under construction?
I'm going to say probably, probably seven days at best.
And at worst?
No, like, that would be it. I mean, it's, it's.
Seven days max?
Yeah. It's like three hundred and ninety, and four hundred and eighty feet, and they're just crossing Simon Willard. And then, once they get across the street, they're in, where the circle is, they're in the, on the curb line, for lack of a better, there's no curb there, but it just goes right around the bend and right into the homeowner's house, property.
So, seven days, right?
Weather permitting, and if there's no other gas emergencies in your town, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Any questions from the members of the public at this?
We have a public comment.
Oh, we do have a public, all right. Pamela?
Hi, Pamela Drit, 13 Concord Green. I strongly urge you not to allow this. This goes directly against the clear preference of the entire town of Concord, and I am sure that it would not provide a strong hardship on the homeowner. Most homeowners who add gas do that because they don't understand the economic and environmental benefits of using heat pumps and other newer technologies. And we should go with what's best for everyone, and that is not to expand gas or fossil-fuel infrastructure in any way.
Can I comment?
Sure, of course. Yes.
Pamela, I, I really do sympathize with what you're saying. It's just that until we're part of the pilot, we really can't prevent this.
Well, we are part of the pilot.
No, we're not. We just found out today that it's not.
We're part, I'm sorry, we're part of the pilot, but the, the law is not into effect yet.
Thank you. Do we know when that?
But that never, the law means we are part of the pilot, and if it could have started before then, now it would have.
You're right, but it, but unfortunately.
We should proceed as though we are, especially when doing this opens us up to fifty years or more of fossil-fuel infrastructure, and probably the homeowner doesn't realize what they're doing.
I, I believe, though, in terms of our legal authority, the reason that the fossil-fuel legislation was necessary was that the town did not have the authority to restrict the provision of utilities, and that the only authority we had was under the fossil-fuel law. And if we don't have the authority under that law, I don't think we can turn them down on the basis that we, it is our preference to not promote the use of fossil fuels.
Also, it sounds like, I thought I heard Mary say they put the application in more than a year ago. So, I think the fossil fuel definitely was, you know, we were just conceiving of it then.
Okay.
But also, previously, we had gas main expansions and renovations that our previous environmental, Concord environmental employees said that, that the gas company withdrew because they wanted to connect with them, the removal, safe removal at the end of the life or when it was no longer needed, and they weren't willing to do that. I think they should at least be willing, have to do the same kinds of restrictions that were legal then. That was several years ago.
There, there is a provision, if I recall my reading of this application correctly, for removal of the service when it is no longer used.
At the gas company's expense, not the town's?
Yes.
All right. Any other comments on this, either on, online or in the, in the room here?
Okay. Move to approve the grant.
Well, we have to close the hearing first.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Move to approve the grant of location request for a gas main petition for National Grid at 398 Simon Willard Road, with the conditions proposed by the Concord Public Works Engineering.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Pamela, thank you for your comments, as always. And now, we have concluded that matter. So, do we want to pick, we have twenty minutes before the caucus convenes. Do we want to pick up where we left off with Megan?
Yeah.
Or are we done with that?
Um, thank you for your time. And I just want to, it's, I can hear it softly. The grant was approved?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Thank you very much, and have a good evening.
Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you.
It seemed like we were almost finished talking about MCI.
My, my comment on it was that it's kind of surprising that the, that the state would come up with a proposal affecting a particular town without, say, with so little consideration or consultation with, with, with the locality that would be seriously affected by the, by that proposal. And it's not the same as some program that affects the whole state at large. It would be something that very specifically affects this town. And I would have expected at least a courtesy to do some advance planning and setting up a process for dealing with it, for, just announced as a, as a proposed reality.
That's a really good point, and I felt the same way about the shelter. So, this is interesting. It's two, two projects now. The state, you know, and it seems like they might be really great projects, but we would probably have an even better project if we had some input and some discussion.
What we're learning is how difficult it is to deal with the government.
We can also say that the state with the MBTA zoning act is also putting pressure on directly to the government staffs that are, for the good of the state, that are not being done at the local level. So, I can understand.
But that's a statewide thing, and that makes sense.
Yeah.
Right. And, and we're not opposed to these things, but we would like some advanced input and communication right there.
Yeah. Well, it's just a thought, as I say, in, in being, governing ourselves, we should take apart the fact that sometimes things are difficult for people.
We here, though, is to begin a dialogue about master plan and site uses that we could take advantage of here. And clearly, there are some very significant opportunities from housing, wastewater treatment, potentially for
Transportation?
public facilities, like the police fire station or public works that we need. It's a very interesting site from my perspective. I would, I for one, would like to know a lot more about the site. And I think that there, we should be in the gathering ideas phase of things. So, I think what we might most usefully do is, is try to funnel the various thoughts that people have at the moment into one place so that they can be triadified to our staff and they can start to really get organized. So, because we have the situation we have, and better to be prepared from here than to worry about what might form the floor.
You're suggesting a master plan across the entire town, this would trigger that and include, like, two, two, two main?
No. Well, no. What I'm suggesting is that we need to look at this site specifically, look at what opportunities it presents and what its uses and public uses we might have for, and begin to formulate those ideas. It was pretty clear to me when I read the portion of the budget about this, that the state, at least to the extent they were thinking about this, had contemplated subdividing this property into a number of sections. Now, there's a section that's inside the half-mile, there's a section that's outside, there's a section that runs along the river. There are utilities for some outside the wall and inside. And I think we need to really understand what they might be subdivided. That's, I mean, this is a process.
Yeah. And I think if we are proactive on it, which is to say that we come up with some viable proposals, we might be able to prevail by filling the vacuum which otherwise resists. So, I mean, is this a job for the planning board? It already is very occupied by other large projects.
So, I certainly, I certainly agree with us being proactive on this and learning as much as we can. I don't, however, presume that our town manager's office and others have already been in conversation with some ideas which, in some ways, probably led to this being made. That doesn't mean we were consulted specifically, but I would not assume that there wasn't already some conversation, because, you know, just harkening back to some of the, the needs that we've already identified with. that we've already identified with the recent legislative visit from Lori Trowhan, you know, we were talking about some needs that we had there with wastewater management, et cetera, and we've been identifying some other, as a town, we've been identifying other needs. So just, we need to look at this holistically, but Megan, I think, when you said this is clearly going to be a multi-year disposition, yes, in fact, Michael Lawson and I went down and spoke with Senator Barrett's office about three years ago, when we were, not recalling exactly what piece of property we were looking at at the time, and he clearly indicated that the office that disposes of the surplus property takes their time, takes their time. And, you know, in this case, when there's such valuable property at stake, you know, who knows what the price tag is going to be, and, you know, they have the option of working with the town or another nonprofit, or, you know, they have so many options. Meanwhile, we have the 229 committees that are also exploring, you know, about housing, about public works, about all kinds of uses over there, so it's almost like two parallel efforts going, would be going on, one for each property. I don't know the best way to handle it.
They have different, you know, different aspects in mind, really, just with the MCI does not have, we don't know this, there are environmental issues, there are substantial issues in terms of demolition and repotting, unless you can find a new site that requires permanent maintenance, or there's a branch of the work that needs to be done, so.
I think we need a bit more about the focus of this particular site, where it's directly adjacent to this, it's right across from the Johnson Building, the property, it's near West Colony, you know, it's around the corner from the Rogers, so this is a west Concord issue, pretty much first order. I can understand that one might throw it up or property that's in the middle.
I'm not saying throw it in.
I think we need to, we need to think about this as something that's really important to the future of our, and it, you know, is a direct basis upon the MBTR community's zoning space, and.
And the road ring.
And the road ring, which we have a very. And so I think that it's important for us to think about whether it's like being our community, so that there's maybe a reason, really what these reasons would look like going forward, because this is a very significant issue.
Deeply concerned about this, between the KF3 and the TACR, it's probably, as far as the budget goes, we're talking about, it's, it's, so I think that's a factor, and as I think, it has to be a two, a three, a four, so, yes, I know we need housing, but we already have quite a bit of housing, and I think that's, I would say, that's actually a business, because it should be one piece of the, and keep in mind that there is a rail, which is a rail, it's not a rail train, but if you think about the consumer areas for transportation, and the, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a , you know, there's more surveillance for that, so.
The other thing that it's, 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 it would be to have more experience with the state, but it's going to be something like a baseball briefing, it's going to be well to be, so if it's, you know, connected to anything, so, and now wanting to have a response to it, so, yeah, so, that's, I understand. You know, you, you know, those, you know, I know, that would be another, I think, the initiation process, making sure to our other facilities, I think, myself. Anyway, we need to adjourn this meeting.
We'll try to continue to be ready to turn caucus and use the short, uh, for, for.
We will be back here after the conference. Stay here.
Excuse me, there's a sound problem on Zoom.
Hi, good evening. Will the 2024 Town Caucus please come to order? Under the Massachusetts General Law Chapter 53, Section 118, as Assistant Town Clerk, I shall preside until a chair is elected by the caucus. I now declare the meeting open for nominations for Chair of the Caucus.
I nominate Michael Lawson, 695 Old Road.
Thank you. Okay, is there a second? Second? Okay. Do I hear any other nominations? Okay, thank you. Hearing no other nominations, is there a motion to close the nominations? Okay, and is there a second? Great. All those in favor of Michael Lawson as Chair of this caucus, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, no. Thank you. And I declare that Michael Lawson has been elected to serve as Chair of this caucus, and I just ask that everyone please silence your cellphones. And Michael? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. It's good to see you. For this wonderful caucus. So, as required, I have inspected the notice of the caucus for compliance with Massachusetts General Law Chapter 53, Section 118, and find it in order. The notice was posted in five places throughout Concord and posted online. I have determined by my great visual inspection that there are at least twenty-five people here constituting a quorum, and I now call for nomination for the clerk of the caucus. What's happening? Get back, get back. Is that better? Closer to my body. Call for nominations for clerk of the caucus. Yes, ma'am?
I'm now making the need to check like 260 Virginia Road for clerk of the caucus.
Thank you, is there a second? I see that there is. Are there any other nominations? See no other nominations, is there a motion to close the nomination? And is there a second? All good. All those in favor of closing the nomination, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The motion carries, and I declare that Nita Teckley is clerk of the caucus, and I appreciate her service very much. The purpose of the caucus is to nominate candidates, candidate or candidates for each office to be filled. This year, the offices to be filled are as follows. One moderator for a one-year term, two members of the select board for three-year terms, two members of the school committee for three-year terms, and one member of the Housing Authority for a five-year term. The caucus procedure is described by Massachusetts General Law 50, Chapter 53, Section 121, and is as follows. If more than one person is nominated for a seat, the two persons receiving the highest number of votes cast shall be declared nominated for such office by this caucus. If in the voting results there is a tie, the candidate receiving the smallest number of votes, but which for the tie would have entitled the person receiving such number to appear as a candidate, all candidates participating in such votes shall be declared nominees. If a person receives less than eight percent of the votes of those voting for nominees, he or she shall not be declared nominated. To simplify our procedure this evening, I propose that the caucus adopt the following motion, as has been done in previous years. Here is the motion. It shall be the rule of this caucus, that if the number of persons nominated as candidates for an office does not exceed twice the number of persons to be elected to such office, the chair shall, unless there is a request from a voter at the caucus that a ballot be taken, declare such persons to be the nominees of the caucus for such office. And I would entertain such a motion. Thank you. Is there a second? There is. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. The motion carries. We shall receive nominations in the order that I previously described. For each office, I shall ask the nominators to come forward, and the order of the nominations will be in alphabetical order by the candidate's last name. Each speaker is to state his or her own name and address. The nominators will say the name and address of the nominee, and we will put it up on the board. A seconder is required, but a seconding speech is optional. The first office that we will take up this evening is that of the town moderator, for which there is a one-year term, and our people who are planning to nominate someone for the office of moderator, please come forward. Yes, sir? Let me just make sure, are there any other nominees? Seeing none? Mr. Terry?
Thank you. Jim Terry, 368 College Road. I nominate Cameron Reese of 52 Devon Street for the one-year term of moderator. This April, Cameron will be leading her ninth annual town meeting for the town of Concord. She is well thought of by many people around town, and she has actually been president of the Massachusetts Moderators Association. So she's well thought of all the way across the state. Cameron has done a number of things that are different from what we have seen from the. past moderators. She is the first female moderator that the Town of Concord has had. She is the first moderator who has moderated a town meeting on a soccer field. She has also been the first moderator who's been masked during town meeting. One of the things that I found when I was doing a little bit of research is that of all of the elected officers, the moderator, Select Board members, School Committee members, and Housing Authority members, the moderator is the only person who primarily is standing when doing his or her responsibilities. All the rest of them are seated. I am pleased to nominate Cameron Reese for the Town Moderator for the term of one year. Outstanding, upstanding candidate.
Thank you, Mr. Terry. Is there a seconding speech? Mr. Green?
I have nothing to add.
Well, well said. Based on the motion you've previously adopted, I would ask Ms. Reese to please stand and declare her the nominee of the caucus. Thank you very much. Well, persons who intend to nominate people for the Office of Select Board, please come forward. I know there's more than one.
My name is Christine Reynolds. I reside at 15 Captain Lyles Lane. I'm a member of the Plinex Committee going to speak for myself. Tonight, I have the pleasure of nominating Henry Dane at 58 Everett Street to a second term on the select board. About to know Henry over the past three years. He's a smart, experienced, no-nonsense eater who after many years of engaged citizenship knows the town very well. Attend any community event in Concord, you're sure to find Henry there. Welcome to people who share his stories and enjoy a few laughs. Henry has lived in Concord for over 15 years. He certainly has his ancestral law practice. Raised his four children who attended Concord Public Schools. Active in town fairs and committees for many years, Henry notably worked on the creation of the Peace Center and served as president of the Royal Department. He's a lifetime member of the Friendsville Library and former treasurer and vice president of the Concord Community Music Society. Close recently, he was the bride of force for Henry's Concord 250th Celebration Off the Ground and served as its chair. Professionally, he is a longtime member of the Massachusetts and Hampton Parks. Recently retired as a member of the Hampton Park Equity Committee and currently a director of the Mass Real Estate Park Association and chair of its executive section. During his first term as a Select Board member and more recently as Chair, Henry has taken a common sense approach to issues like expanding cellphone coverage and removing unpopular parking permits. Property tax impact with the new municipal, challenging the tax rate, presidential exemption of energy owners of building malls. His legal expertise and real estate background has been helpful to his
.............................................................................................................................................................................................
Thank you very much. Is there a second for the nomination? Yes, sir.
Please come up here, Mr. Brown.
I'll say that in front of the mic. My name's Paul Mccone. I live at 33 Grove Street. I'm seconding the nomination for Henry Dane for the Select Board. He lives at 58 Everett Street. This is an honor for me to be the second and to say something about Henry. He was a great guy. Christine did an excellent job of speaking about all the boards that he's been on, the committees he's been on, and he's always in the center of Concord somewhere, which is talking to people, understanding the town is very, very important. The people that serve on the Select Board, the committees, the task force, you name it, they're what make keep this town special. So accolades to them. I crossed paths with Henry several times in my professional capacity. I was on the police department for 30 years. Now, I don't want you to think that was putting Henry in the cell block or something. It wasn't. It was in his capacity as a respected local attorney. In the dealings that I had with Mr. Dane professionally, he was always an advocate and a zealot for his client, and he worked very hard with law enforcement for a fair outcome. And I think, and I can attest to that. I think Henry now has about 18,000 clients. They're pro bono. Sorry about that, Henry. But he represents all of us as citizens here in town. So for that, I thank you. He, during my professional interactions, I mentioned that he was a strong advocate, and I also want to mention that he was right there in the beginning with the Communities for Restorative Justice, which was an important initiative that still exists today. Henry has been a successful three-year Select Board member. He's smart, honest, ethical, and caring, and he's an advocate for all of us. I would ask you all, when it's time to vote, to vote for Mr. Dane. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Colin Bachman, 144 Southfield Road. Here to nominate Joe Lauren of 134 Southfield Road for Select Board. So today, I stand before you to talk about a remarkable individual who's not just my friend, he's also my neighbor, for Select Board. Joe has unwavering support and commitment to this community. He's been a champion for small businesses as well and advocates for their growth and sustainable growth at that. In a time when many enterprises face numerous challenges, Joe supports those that can grow communities as well as those who live in the communities. Apart from his professional endeavors, Joe's dedication to the youth of this town is also exemplary. He's been a coach for many town sports over the years and not only teaches young kids the skills of the sport, but also the invaluable lessons that come along with that. And many, many kids who've gone and had Joe as a coach know what kind of character he provides. He also has compassion beyond the sporting fields. He volunteers for Kicks for Cancer, one of the best events in town, and he's shown at every event helping out and making it better for everyone. He has empathy and dedication, and Joe himself is more about just Kicks for Cancer. It's about helping the community. That's the kind of person Joe is. If you don't know Joe, he's also a trustee for the Scholarship Fund of Concord and Carlisle. And he's been pivotal in nurturing the dreams of many young children in town. He's opened the doors for many students as part of his endeavors in helping them pursue their educational aspirations. Joe's also really friendly, and he's willing to help out. And as a neighbor, I can tell you, if he's a good neighbor, he's also going to be good in town in Select Board. So in conclusion, Joe's multifaceted contributions historically should be turned into a civic responsibility that he can offer this town. He really embodies, for me, as not only a neighbor and a friend, but a person who's all about service, compassion, and commitment. And I will just share one more thing. On the way here, my daughter's here, she's the youngest person in the room, unless there's anyone else here who's in fourth grade. And she said, "I really like Joe. When he moved here, he was so kind. He gave me a stuffed animal that I still have today." And Joe didn't have to do that, but that's the kind of person he is. He's also tough. He helps make good, tough choices in his professional endeavors, and I'm convinced he'll be excellent in the Select Board. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there a second?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is John Sweeney. I reside at 34 Authors Road. I second the nomination that Colin presented for Joe Lauren of Southfield Road. May I comment on my history with Joe? We began working together as colleagues about 15 years ago, so I've known him since he moved to town. He and his wife Maureen have raised two sons who went through the Concord school system. Think very highly of Joe. And a couple of things about him to supplement what Colin said. One, thinks very long-term. When I think about Concord, part of what's great about Concord are the people who sat in this room before us and thought 100 years into the future. That's what's important about managing Concord, to make sure that it's still the community in 100 years that we recognize today. Secondly, how do we grow it in an effective way to make sure that we have the growth that we talked about? Colin mentioned small businesses. We love the small businesses who are the center of the community. It's why we think that we have a special downtown. The third thing is, how do you do it fiscally responsibly? So working in financial services, Joe has a significant background and applies finance to a lot of the decisions that we make, making sure that we're making prudent decisions that the town can afford. So growth with fiscal responsibility is a unique quality that I think would make Joe an excellent select candidate. Thank you.
Robert O'Neil, 171 Deacon Haynes Road. And I am here to enthusiastically nominate Cameron McKennett, 64 Nut Meadow Crossing, for Select Board. I have known Cam since we both grew up in Concord. We have remained close as we've been lucky enough to raise our family here in Concord also. Cam attended Concord Public Schools as well as his children. He has been an active volunteer in Concord, coaching youth sports. He probably wouldn't want me to say this, but he's also a member of the Concord-Carlisle High School Athletic Hall thing. I think that knowing Cam, he's always been focused on opportunities for all. He kind of has, there's a couple layers of that. He certainly has a very extensive business experience. Most of that has been in strategy and consulting as well as finance. And I think that unique perspective would be a great asset to the Town of Concord. I also think you couple that with someone who grew up in Concord, who raised their family in Concord, in addition, whose parents also live in Concord, kind of gives him that unique, multi-generational view of the town and the town's needs as we move forward. And for those reasons, I enthusiastically support Cam's candidacy for Select Board.
Thank you very much. Is there a second? I suspect.
Good evening. My name's Leo Boyle, 36 Williams Road. Here to support Cameron's bid for Select Board, and he's 64 Nut Meadow Road. I've known Cam since my daughter and his daughter were small, and they've grown up together. Kind of gone different ways, but they're still very close. One's in theater, one's in sports. But Cam and I have coached since he was, all the kids were little, multi-generation, multiple kids, and Cam's part of a multi-generational family here in Concord. I think he'll represent the town with that lens. And he's also been, as Rob had said, he's been in business strategy. He's worked for National Grid at one point, and you know, so he has a lot of good thinking that can come to bear here in Concord. So I wholeheartedly support Cam for Select Board. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi there. I'm Alice Kaufman. I live at 1615 Lowell Road, and I'm here to nominate Wendy Raveli for a position on the Select Board. She lives at 42 Bow Street. I've known Wendy for about 10 years, and we've worked in tangents for most of those years. When I was on the Select Board, she was on the FINCOM. And we served together for a number of years on the Concord Municipal Light Board, of which I'm still a member. But I want to share some things that I know about Wendy. Like several of the other candidates, actually, she grew up in this town. She really cares about Concord. She's a graduate of CCHS. Her kids, she raised her kids here. They are also, they also went through the Concord schools. But she's also an avid pickleball player, as am I. But when she fractured her wrist playing, she took the downtime from the game to advocate for resurfacing the pickleball courts at Ride Out. She's unstoppable. But that doesn't make her a good candidate for Select Board, but I'll tell you about that, too. She's honest and trustworthy, but she takes the time to really understand a problem before offering an opinion. She's, it's probably from her training, she is a mathematician, an economist, and she has an MBA. And altogether, that kind of training gave her a certain rigor to understanding, thoroughly understanding, a problem before she comes to her own conclusions. She asks, and I know this for a fact, difficult and insightful questions, really hard ones that make us all stop and think. And to do that, you have to be a really good listener. And I've witnessed her, I've witnessed these skills in the years that I've known her from the various boards. This rigor of thought alone makes her a very strong candidate for the, for a candidate for the Select Board, where the issues are numerous and complex and often take a balancing of competing interests to resolve. I've seen her in action where her sharp analytical skills help her decipher complicated cost implications of OEPED. Some of us know OEPED. It's our Other Post Employment Benefits. Or the details of a 100, oh, Jim Terry, too, a 100-plus-page cost of service study for our municipal light plant, which is the base for our, basis for us making complicated decisions on our rate structure for electricity in town. But Wendy really does care about Concord, and she's not afraid to raise concerns about our town budgets, our costs, and especially when she takes into consideration the taxpayer's ability to pay. She's already left her mark here in town. While on the FINCOM, her deep analyses have helped guide the FINCOM's five-year forecasted tax burden. I mean, what are the impacts of every tax increase on the individual? That's where she dug in. And she was part of the Concord Public School teacher contract negotiations, and she created and developed a financial trend analysis that helped to understand the long-term cost implication of these contracts. What you're hearing from me is that she doesn't shoot from the hip. She is cautious and careful and thorough in her deliberations, and she really won't render a decision because it's trendy on its own. She takes the time to do the full analysis. So aside from the committees that we've worked on together, she was also a member of the Financial Audit Advisory Committee, and she served as Treasurer of the Concord Children's Center where her children went when she and her husband were working. Retired now from her day job, she's ready to tackle the myriad of issues that come before the Select Board, and it's my pleasure to nominate Wendy for a position on the Board.
Is there, is there a second?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Lynda Miller, 300 Main Street. I have the honor tonight to second Wendy Raveli's nomination for position on the Select Board. Wendy, born and raised in Concord, has served in many volunteer capacities in the town. These include, as Alice These include, as Alice mentioned, the Concord Children's Center, the light plant, the Financial Audit Advisory Committee, and the Solar Implementation Task Force. I first met Wendy when I overlapped with her appointment to the Finance Committee, where she displayed leadership as Member, Vice Chair, and Chair. Wendy's academic background in mathematics, business, and economics, and career in managed care, from which she recently retired, were the source of her probing interest in the workings of town and school finances, and quick mastery of much difficult material across complex issues. During our time on the Finance Committee, Wendy was always prepared to participate in and lead meetings. On many occasions, I remember Wendy gently educating the rest of the committee. Her decision-making was based on both her long-term knowledge and understanding of Concord and the town's priorities. Whatever the issue, her input was focused, analytical, and based on a detailed, thoughtful consideration of fact. No matter how many spreadsheets and calculations were required, Wendy did her homework and supported her conclusions. Wendy's personal character makes her an ideal candidate for the Select Board. Wendy listens, questions, probes, and hears. Wendy works as hard as any volunteer I've come across, and let me tell you, that is no simple feat here in Concord. Wendy is fearless. She says what she thinks. She collaborates, is transparent, and a team player. Wendy has integrity, is honest and trustworthy, and will represent the town of Concord admirably. I'm honored to second the nomination of Wendy Raveli without any reservation, with great enthusiasm and strong conviction, for a position on the Concord Select Board. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Are there any other nominations? All right, I ask Mr. Dane, Mr. Lauren, Mr. McKinnick, and Ms. Raveli to please stand. And I declare you the nominees of the caucus. Thank you. Next, we will entertain nominations for the School Committee. For those folks coming up to nominate a person, would you please come up to the podium?
Good evening. My name is Alkita Haas. I live in 328 Oak Hill Circle, and I nominate Elizabeth Cobb, who lives in 31 Pondview Lane. My family moved to Concord nine years ago, and in a large part because of a strong school system. I do have a child at middle school and high school. And when I first met Liz Cobb, we bonded over conversations of our children and their education. We immediately saw how she's enthusiastic and insightful. She has very high standards for her children, and she cares a great deal about Concord community. Liz has a deep interest in education for all, and she's been involved in a lot of volunteer activities such as the Rotary Club. She's chaired the Youth Leadership Program, sending 11 students to a three-day program at Fitchburg State University. Liz also has been volunteering at the Metco Program in Concord, and supporting the Alcott Family and Friends Program at the CC, and also helping children at CCHS for college application process. Liz's business experience with, will enhance her work at the School Committee. She's a results-oriented team builder. She engages others while keeping an eye on the big-picture goal. And I enthusiastically nominate her for the Concord School Committee.
Very much. Is there a second? Your Honor?
I'm John Kratzly, and I live at 10 Edmunds Road with my wife Holly, and we, I don't know if we have permission, we were going to be co-secunders, but Holly fell ill, and I think it was due to our 4th grader, our four-year-old granddaughter. Anyway, she's home, and I'm here to second the nomination of Elizabeth Cobb for the Concord School Committee. You've heard a good bit about her already. She has the credentials that I think we seek in a School Committee candidate. Her son Kenneth is a senior. Her daughter Evangeline, a 5th grader, she's active in the Metco Program, and she works with the Metco Director in advising juniors on their college essays and applications. Her work in town government is with the co-chair of the Personnel Committee, and that's been a delicate job in its relations with the town manager and with the HR, and I think that has been and turned out to be a very successful collaboration. She's got a PhD from the University of Chicago, a university I know well from my law school days. I feel good about that. And she has over 19 years with Merck in management positions. I think she has a lot to contribute in listening, in accumulating facts, making fact-based decisions, collaboration, and working hard for the youth and the future of our youth in Concord. So I'm happy to second her nomination. Elizabeth Cobb, 31 Pondview Road Lane.
Susan Bates, 28 Concord Green, Unit 6. We've heard a lot of candidates about, candidates tonight who have deep Concord roots, and we have another one right here. I'm pleased and honored to nominate Andrew Hertech, 13 Garland Road, for a three-year term on the School Committee. I've known Andrew for about 30 years, since middle school. His, not mine. When you know someone for that length of time, you get a good sense of their values. Andrew is solid. He and his wife Whitney were educated in the Concord Public Schools and CCHS. He's an honorable man, intelligent, a good listener, an entrepreneur, well-educated, with a degree from Dartmouth and an MBA from Harvard, a hard worker, and a good friend, spouse, father, son, and citizen of our town. He's a quick study and picks up and internalizes information effectively. He has the characteristics we want in a School Committee member who will help develop the policy that guides the education plan and evaluate components of a complex budget. In addition, he represents the demographic that's on deck to take on responsibility for the many boards and committees in this town. When I spoke with Andrew about his desire to serve on the School Committee, he articulated his passion for the excellent education that he received, and the desire to continue that for his two children and for all students in CPS and CCHS. He describes himself as a data guy. His approach to problem-solving is to dig down, find and analyze data on a given issue, and make recommendations based on his findings. His skills will be well utilized as the School Committee examines the increasing cost of schools operating in capital, and the growing portion of the total town resources that it requires in an environment of changing enrollment, aging population, and already high property taxes. I am very confident that Andrew can play an important role in addressing these challenges.
Thank you very much. Is there a second? There is.
Hi, I'm Peter Linus, 193 Neshoba Road, and I'm here to second the nomination of Andrew Hertech, Garland Road, for School Committee. I think Susan summed it up really well. I've known Andrew now for five years as a neighbor. We've coached soccer together. I see him almost every day at the bus stop picking up our kids from Willard. Andrew is a tremendous father. He's committed. He's passionate. He's very honest, and I think he'd make a terrific representative of the town for the School Committee. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, appreciate it. Good afternoon. Good evening, sorry. Matt Boger, 121 Baker Avenue, and I've got the great privilege of nominating Tracy Morano of 39 Partridge Lane for the position of School Committee. I will note that she's wearing a star sweater. She is a star herself. She's representing that. I often discuss that running for the position of School Committee is probably the most important office in American government, as it is where the future of our children is cultivated, and appropriately so, our community budget is heavily supported in that important mission. Tracy, I'm sure everyone knows, has served a wonderful, successful first term on the School Committee as a thoughtful, accessible, transparent, caring, open-minded, publicly-available, continuously-seeking-information, and dedicated elected official. Tracy is a great example of a lean-in and thoughtful person we in Concord want to represent us and our kids. Her background provides her the strong resume we want for this position, receiving her BA in elementary education and a master's in education and special education from Boston College. In her professional career, she served as an educator and assistant principal for the Bedford School System. As we all know, Tracy has served chair as the Concord Carlo Regional School Committee for the past two years. She has been involved in all aspects of Concord education, which has been numerous, engaging with students, parents, and the inquiring public. I will add that I've seen Tracy in many social engagements, both school-related and non-socially, and more socially engagement. Where questions were posed to Tracy, and her thoughtful answers and ability to see both sides of a situation were impressive to witness, and again, exactly what we want to see in an elected official. Tracy has skin in the game, with four wonderful children, all having used or are using the Concord Schools K through 12. I nominate her not as a friend, which I am, not as a fellow engaged parent in this great community, which we both are, not as a fellow Concordian, but putting her candidacy forward as perhaps one of the most qualified and proven School Committee members we have seen. I proudly and exuberantly nominate Tracy for the position of School Committee in Concord, a community which is not the best community in the country, not the best in the world, but the best in the universe. Thank you so much.
Is there a second for the nomination? Yes, please come up. A galactic remark.
My name is Carrie Rankin. I live at 95 Upland Road in Concord. I'm a member of the Concord School Committee, and I'm speaking tonight on behalf of myself. I'm here tonight to proudly second Tracy Morano for 39 Partridge Lane in Concord for reelection to this Concord School Committee. For over two decades, Tracy has called Concord her home. She's not only a resident, but a parent who, as Matt said, has watched her four children thrive in our public schools. This personal journey through our education system gives her a unique and invaluable perspective. Tracy's connection to education goes beyond her role as a parent. As a former special education teacher, she brings a deep understanding of the educational landscape, the intricacies of teaching, and most importantly, the diverse needs of our children. This dual insight as both an educator and a parent has been instrumental in shaping her approach on the School Committee. In her three years on the Committee, to as chair of the Regional School Committee, Tracy has exemplified what it means to be an effective leader. She leads with transparency and openness. She's not one to shy away from tough conversations. She speaks her mind clearly and with conviction, yet she always remains open to different opinions and perspectives. Tracy stands out as someone who is not only willing, but exceptionally capable of serving our community. She is driven by the right reasons, a deep care for our children, and a commitment to their future. She is smart. She's invested in this town and community, and willing to make tough decisions to ensure people, those with and without children, can live and thrive here in Concord. And she is genuinely a good person. It is therefore with great honor and without reservation that I proudly second Tracy Morano for another term on the Concord School Committee. Her leadership, experience, and passion are exactly what our schools need to continue to thrive. Thank you.
Are there any other nominations? Seeing none, would Ms. Cobb, Mr. Hertech, and Ms. Morano please stand, or if you're standing away? And I declare you are the nominees of the caucus. Thank you very much. The next offices for the Housing Authority, one seat, a five-year term. Are there nominations?
My name is Charles Phillips, 65 Fairhaven Road, and I want to nominate Edward Tarr Larnor of 167 Elsinore Street for a five-year term on the Concord Housing Authority. Edward is completing a term on the Housing Authority and would like to be reelected. I served with him myself for a couple of years. Edward has been treasurer of the Housing Authority and is well acquainted with the financial operations of the Authority. This past year, he served as housing representative on the Community Preservation Committee. He also spent a number of years as a resident at Everett Gardens, and is acquainted with many of the residents and employees there. Edward is gregarious and personable, and has many good ideas on expanding opportunities for affordable housing. He asks for your vote at town election.
Thank you. Is there a second? Mr. Rob?
I'm coming.
All right. Thank you, thank you, thank you. I'm here to second Ned Larnor. And my name is Russ Robb. I live on Monument Street, and then is at 136, 167 Elsinore Street. So, let me proceed. I've been a neighbor of Ned's for maybe 50 years, and I find him very engaging. But as a background, he went to Dartmouth College. He served in the Army as a captain of the Army in the Vietnam War, and then he worked in California for Paycheck, which is a public company. And I want to say, he's very engaging, but he's very thorough and very meticulous. And I know that he'll do an excellent job as a Housing Committee person, and will continue his five-year stint, hopefully. And I applaud him very strongly, and I've known him for a long time. I've been a neighbor of his, and I've known him for, you know, 30, 40 years. So he's very talented, and I think you should perhaps vote him in. Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Robb. Are there any other nominations? Mr. Larnor, would you please stand? And I declare you the nominee of the caucus.
If anyone was not nominated tonight and is interested in running for office, the last day to file nomination papers for the town clerk is Tuesday, February 20th, by 5:00 PM. You will need to gather at least 50 signatures of registered voters, and the town clerk has blank nomination papers available in the town clerk's office. I also would note that the League of Women Voters will be sponsoring their annual candidates forum on March 10th from 1:00 to 3:00 PM here in the townhouse. And before we adjourn, I would ask all the candidates who were nominated by the caucus to please come forward and speak with the town clerk's office before leaving to accept the nomination and collect your campaign finance material. So, I have a motion to adjourn. Is there a second? I suspect there is. All those in favor? Any opposed? I declare the 2024 caucus adjourned. Thank you all for coming.
Okay, so, let's see. We finished the
Public hearing.
Public hearing, and are we done with the comments from the town manager's office?
Yes, we are.
And does that lead us to the town manager, the chair's remarks? All right.
There's no sound on Zoom.
Uh-oh.
Uh-oh.
Can you
Let me go check over there.
Well, let us, now, can we just keep talking and find out when the sound starts to come through?
It's coming through now.
Is it?
Pamela, can you hear us now?
Do you hear us on Zoom now?
I mean, I'm on the Zoom meeting, and I can hear.
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Good, thank you.
Okay. I have a list of a number of observations on several things that have come to my attention. One is that, and maybe this is going to be covered in a liaison. Am I speaking? Thank you.
It's really noisy out there.
Also speak up for
Yeah, they can't hear back there.
Speak to the man in the back row.
Yes, okay. That's I don't know whether this is going to be covered in a liaison report. Are we going to hear about the environmental impact review for Hanscom in our, well
Oh, go ahead.
Okay. It appears that there is, in fact, an environmental impact review being prepared that is going to be discussed. I've learned this from, I think, reading The Bridge, that is going to be discussed at a Hanscom Field Advisory Committee meeting on February 20th, and it is, and apparently is going to be presented to MEPA on March 15th. And so, this is something that I think we want to know about. We want to see. They said they're going, trying to get a draft of the review before their February 20th meeting, but so it might be available there.
And I'm glad you brought that up. If someone could go, I'm the liaison, and I'm flying home that night from Trip. I'm sure I'm going to miss the meeting. If someone else could go, I think the proponents of the project are going to be speaking.
Yes, that's what the paper says.
And when I say go, it's all by Zoom, anyway. So, I really would appreciate if someone else could fill in.
Well, you can deal with that offline.
It's February 20.
I had the pleasure of attending the bunker in Framingham with the MEMA Public Safety Review for the 250th. Was a very impressive meeting with the police, fire, public safety, people not only from the four towns, but from state agencies, from the FBI, from the state police, from the National Guard, all meeting together with a very, very well-presented program, which was presided over by the Director of Public Safety for the Commonwealth, and where Fred Ryan was one of the principal presenters, who has taken the position of coordinator of the public safety operations. And they're doing a great job. And it's, whatever it is, it's going to be safe. The issue that we continue to face from various sources of information is the state continues to be providing funds to promote the events, but not to pay for them, which is, means that it seems to me, in my perverse manner of thought, that what they're doing is just making matters worse by spending money to promote an event that they are not providing the funds to manage or to protect. An important note with regard to the 250th, the nonprofit corporation called Concord 250 Corporation, which I established about two years ago, just the other, last week, received its 501(c)(3) qualification from the IRS. And that means at this point, we have a corporation, a nonprofit corporation, to help fund the 250th celebration with private and institutional tax deductible contributions. And just to put in a plug, the address to which to send contributions is PO Box 250, of all things, which I pushed very hard for us to get at the beginning. So, now we have PO Box 250, to which you can send a check for a tax deductible contribution, of course, consult your tax advisor, to help finance the 250th celebration.
And that's PO 250 in Concord, right?
Yes, of course. 01742. Unfortunately, we couldn't change the ZIP code for the occasion. So, you all know that the tricentennial markers have now been removed, and there has been a substantial amount of feedback on that, which we will be dealing with. The Concord School Committee has received 26 nominations for names for the middle school, and they will be holding a meeting. And all those names are, I think, online now. And the school committee will be meeting on February 6th to deal with that.
Do you mean 26 different people have nominated, or there are 26 different suggestions?
26 different suggestions, although there is some overlaps. In other words, there are some overlaps, but there are 26 different names and variations. And we already know that the MCI Concord, we've dealt with that situation. So, that's, those are my notes of interest for tonight. So, we move on to Anthony and a review of the
What about liaison reports?
I did mention liaison reports, didn't I? Yes, liaison reports. Any?
Okay, mine's pretty quick. Excuse me. So, the TPW Commission, Public Works Commission, is having a lot of discussion on the Stormwater Utility. They will be going around to different boards and making presentations. There are several ways to fund the Stormwater. One is this Enterprise Fund, which they feel is probably fairer than the Charging General Fund. Carmen called this the sleeper issue of the year. Is there interest from the Select Board in having them come and be on our agenda for a brief Q and A or anything? Or do we already know?
We can talk to them at the hearing, right?
The Enterprise Fund hearing, sure.
I think what we said to them, I think this came up for a brief discussion, we said that we'd wait and see what they had to say in front of the FinCom, and then decide whether it was appropriate for us to talk with them further about this program.
Okay. The 2229 Main Street Oversight Committee, which is different from the Task Force, this committee's been engaged This, this committee's been engaged for many, many years, and responsible for ensuring that cleanup contract or what they say they're going to do, they actually do do, and that the site is remediated in the town's best interest. So this Oversight Committee has been relatively inactive, but the cleanup is proceeding quickly now, and they're going to start meeting monthly again. And the last thing I have is the PEG Access Group. Within six months, they say they're going to have the ability that we can have meetings at the same time in this room as another meeting in the big hearing room. And longer term, they're going to be working more on improving the sound in the larger room. That's it for my.
So we're going to have more meetings where we can't understand anything anybody is saying?
No, they're, hopefully not. Hopefully, they'll be improving that.
Okay, anything else? Mary?
Shall I go? Okay. The West Concord Cultural District Committee met, and two things came out of that. One is they're going to be hosting a convocation of other art groups within town to kind of share best practices, learn from each other. And the other thing I learned at that meeting is that any art in public spaces is going to require a Select Board approval going forward. And some of the projects that the West Concord Cultural District has in the pipeline are painting the signal boxes in West Concord, they're putting up a poetry phone booth, and also a mural on the outside of the outfitters building. And these, because these things are now in public way, their approval is going to come in front of the Select Board. It'll be a two-stage process. Mimi, you're here, you can help. Two-stage process, the first will be just, is this something we think should move forward? And then they'll go and do the work they need to do to get more specifics, and then come back for the final license. Does that make sense? Great, okay. And I don't know the date of their convocation. Do you know when they're hosting that?
It's going to be in late March, I think it's the 26th.
Okay.
Is there a reason why that would require Select Board approval?
Because it's in the public way.
It's a state policy.
Really?
Believe me, Mimi worked really hard to.
Trying to find a way to delegate that.
Yeah, to, to.
The convocation's going to be Wednesday, the 27th.
Thank you. 27th, good. Okay, great. The Ag Committee is going to have a forum in the spring. They have an annual forum every spring. This year will be on climate change and the impact on local farms, and it's, it's real. It's good, well, not good, but it's sobering once in a while to find out what climate change is doing right in our own backyard to our food supply. The other thing they mentioned is that the real estate tax exemption is having an impact on their worker housing. So this is an unintended consequence of the residential tax exemption as far as increasing the cost of their worker housing, but we can talk about that later. CMLB is having a forum, a community-wide forum on February 28th. It's on their purchase power portfolio, public forum. So basically, what they're doing, going to do is hold an information session for the community where they talk about where does our power come from, describe nuclear's role in our portfolio, and celebrate the progress towards a 100% non-carbon emitting power supply. So that's February 28th, and I think it's going to be here in the townhouse. Last but not least, the Planning Board approved, as we heard, I think, in the bridge, the one-story commercial development on 768 Elm Street. And related to the MBTA Communities Affordability Act, we're working still on the economic feasibility to study to find out if we can exceed that 10% affordable component of housing in, within the overlay district. So that's to be, to be determined.
Good, thank you. Linda, you usually have some reports to give?
Yeah, I do. I attended the Concord Housing Development Corporation. They issued their RFP for Junction Village, as well as Assabett River Bluff. They had few responses, so they've extended it now into March. However, that's the latest. However, tomorrow morning, they've called an extra meeting to discuss the implications of the MCI announcement in terms of some of the other, in terms of the RFP, probably, and some other activities that are going on. So that's happening there. Within the last couple of weeks, the, we had representatives from Concord and testifying before the Joint House Committee on, Joint Legislative Committee on Housing at the State House. And they were, they received, obviously, a letter of support from us, as well as from all the housing groups, and received comments about how impressive it was, the number of people from Concord that were there to testify, and how organized they were in their testimony. So that happened there. Again, you know, that's, all we can hope is, there's been a grow, as you, we talked about before, there's been a growing participation across the state for this issue. So all we can hope is that we'll see some movement on that with the legislature coming up. Of course, the real estate lobby that's generally opposed to this also testified, but they were nowhere represented in number or voice by the others that were there that day. I happened to attend the recent meeting of the Historic Commission. It's not one of my committees, but I was interested, they were going to introduce the Historic Preservation Plan scope and schedule. And that was very, very interesting, and we'll hear more about that going forward. At that meeting, Melissa Salfield commented that she would be, she would feel that Concord failed if we were not able to preserve the two prison buildings, because they had played such a role in the history of Concord, both back to the late 1800s in terms of employment and all kinds of other ways. So it was good, Megan, that you mentioned earlier that, you know, we're going to hear some of the, certainly that committee, that comment will probably filter through staff to the town manager's office and, but it's good that you mentioned that, you know, when we hear comments like that, it's, it's helpful if they are brought to your attention, because not all of them will come through staff.
Does the demolition delay bylaw apply to state property?
I can't answer that right now.
Because there's, there is the really old building, which I think is not used at all.
Right.
It's on all the postcards.
Yeah, yeah.
It's part of the promotional material for people staying at their institution?
One of the things that was talked about on Friday at that meeting was a reference to some work that's been done nationally on tools that towns can use for historic preservation. And one of the comments was related to this potential opportunity.
And I think we used some CPA money or some other town money to restore the fountain in front of that house.
We did, we did, we did.
Did you say that the RFP for Junction Village is delayed?
It's been extended for Junction Village and Assabett River Bluff. However, stay tuned, that could change tomorrow, tomorrow morning's meeting.
When you say extended, you mean the time it stays open soliciting proposals?
Correct.
And why is that?
Because they had a light response.
Oh.
Lee Smith is here, if you'd like him to address that, because I think there's even, there's even newer news.
Oh, there's newer news?
Yeah. If you would like.
No, not at all. Lee? Briefly, of course.
Sorry, I'm Lee Smith, 1836 Main Street, Chair of the CHDC. So we put out an RFP the first week in January for both Junction Village and Assabett River. There was a site visit last Tuesday for both sites, as well as a Q and A session. And then we learned the news about the prison on Wednesday morning. So we called a special meeting for tomorrow morning to discuss whether or not to pause the Junction Village RFP. The Assabett River is not on the agenda.
Why, so help me understand why you would do that?
Because we don't know what's going to happen with the directly adjacent property. And if, for example, the town were to come into possession of it and the adjacent property, it could be a very different development project for affordable housing or whatever else might go there.
I'm worried that delays Junction Village for years.
It could. But that may also be in the best interests of the town, so that's why it's a discussion. But, you know, short term, we're talking about a pause just so this process can play out a little more, so we can see maybe which direction it's going.
But one of the things that may be an unintended consequence of the closing down of the prison is that one of the principal concerns that they had was that a multiple-story building adjacent to the prison would be a security issue. And if the prison is not being operated as a prison, then that issue goes away.
And the road.
Yeah, the access road.
Also huge implications for that. It's just, it would, it could potentially be a very different project. So we're just, we don't want to move forward with it without the knowledge of what's going, what may happen on, on the site. And it could be, you know, for the benefit of the town and affordable housing and market housing, for that matter, too.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Doesn't it have to be affordable?
The, the 12.6 acres is restricted for open space and affordable housing purposes, but, you know, if, if hypothetically, you added another 15 acres right over that property line.
But we could probably also.
Be like a joint, like market straddling, straddling that.
But, but the restriction on the Junction Village property is imposed by the state as part of the gift. So if we were going to do something with MCI, it would be possible perhaps to renegotiate those restrictions with them, too. So it might be, could be made a package that would change the whole.
You can change a deed restriction?
If the person, if the entity that imposed it on you wishes to, especially the state, which can, as we know, can do almost anything they want. They, I'm sure that, that, at least it'd be something worth looking into if it would be helpful. But thank you, Lee.
You're welcome. It's nine o'clock tomorrow on Zoom.
Okay, Mark?
Sure. Since we last met, the Personnel Board met on the 10th and voted final language for the warrant and bylaw. After Town Council review came back with some, some minor changes, so that's on track for the new personnel bylaw. They also started working on communications plans. Obviously, because this is the personnel bylaw and it affects our town employees, it's important that they understand something about what's being proposed as it comes forward to town meeting. So that was a recommendation, and the Personnel Director's working on that. The Board of Health also is beginning to discuss regulation of private wells, and particularly in the context of those wells that may be connected to groundwater associated with the superfund sites. So there's a need in the areas of, for example, around 229 Main Street and the Grace property to control the use of wells, and that led to a potentially even broader discussion about that. That's an item that we will be contemplating from the Board of Health, probably for next year, the 2025 town meeting, not 2024, but those discussions are beginning for those people that are interested in it. The NRC has been busy working towards impaling the White Pond Task Force. We're going to talk about that later.
Warner Pond.
Warner's Pond Task Force, thank you. Sorry, too many W's. And.
We have three ponds that start with W.
Middle School Building Committee met on the 18th. Again, that project continues to move along very well. Building C, which is the closest to the existing Sanborn structure, is, is getting enclosed with the, you know, finalization of the superstructure of the, of the last section, which is Building A, getting nearing completion at this point. The DEI Commission has met, met a couple of times as well, and is beginning to discuss the designs and goals of an incident management system, which was one of the goals of the, of their commission for this year, getting that designed and working with the Police Department and other entities. Now, that's it for me.
Good, thank you. Okay, that covers everybody, so let's move on then to Anthony and the town budget.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Board, it's a pleasure to be back here tonight.
It's a pleasure to have you back.
Thank you. Anthony Insalvi, Chief Financial Officer for the town, for those at home. So I'm going to run you through what we have. It's the final budget, finally. Happy to report that after many meetings and, and I'm just happy I don't have here, because I would have pulled it all out, we met guidelines, so, but it was, it was, it was tough to get there, but we got there. And we got there both for the operating and the capital. So on the next slide, I'm going to just slip through, just so you know the, and you've seen most of these. So general government, you know, it's a slight increase in 12%. I hate to get hung up on percentages, but I just wanted to put that out there. And most of the, most of the increases are attributed to implementing the collective, the class and comp study. In general government, we also had some positions that shifted around from other departments to the town manager's office, per se. But other than that, it was a little increase in utility costs. IT had some software agreements that were increased in price, but that's it. It's a, it's a pretty much a, pretty lean budget compared to last year, too. On the next slide is the Finance Department. It's an increase overall of 5%. And again, that's really, the increase is just due to the implementing the comp and class study. On the next slide.
On that question?
Sure.
Why, why does the budget for elections drop by $30,000 from '23 to '25?
I don't have a note on that, Henry, but we vetted that with.
Is that because of mail-in voting or something like that?
I can get you an answer on that, and I can circulate that around. I'm just not sure off the top of my head.
Okay, just thought I'd ask about, about things that seem like changes.
That's usually driven by the number of election events we have, and the primary season falls in the FY24 budget, whereas the general election, which we always have in November, falls on FY25.
I had a couple of questions on the previous page, the general government.
Mm-hmm.
You said some positions have moved to the town manager's office from other departments?
Yes, so we had the Planning Director, which became the Deputy Town Manager, Megan Zamudo. And then we had the HR Director, which became the Assistant Town Manager, Jess Porter. So those budgets fall within the town manager's office now.
Okay. And economic vitality is up significantly? Is there, are there new hires there?
No, there's not. I think this is the first year that we actually included a Terry Kirkman, if I'm wrong, as a, as a separate department and allocating Mimi's salary to that.
Yeah, so I think in fiscal '24, the Economic Vitality Coordinator's salary was paid through ARPA, and so this is the first time it's in the general fund budget in, in full.
Okay, and there was that adjustment showing of that $515,000. So what I didn't understand was, the guideline says that we can go up 3.26%. Is that after the adjustment?
Yeah, so collectively, we did, and that includes the adjustment. And what I did with that adjustment, not to continue carrying that forward, is pretty much broke up that adjustment proportionally against each department's portion of the overall town budget. So everybody took a little hit in absorbing the cost of that $515,000.
Everybody in general government or every?
Everybody, all of our town departments.
All the town departments. Okay. So it's 3. So is 3.26% above the, the original number that we had this year or the adjusted number?
It's 3.26 above last year, last year's levy limit. Right?
Well. So the, the guidelines increase is to the total guidelines appropriation. So we didn't get an extra $515-plus.
Right.
Guideline. We had to factor.
Subtract it and then add the 3.26% you mean.
So it's, it's again, 3.26% increase over the town meeting appropriation, which takes into account that we made, we had to make that $515,000 adjustment.
Okay.
And because of the timing of when that came up, it was all attributed to general government, even though there was no expectation that general government was going to absorb all of that?
Right.
So when you look at a 12% increase, it's, I mean, it's taking into account that $515,000, which is not necessarily a, that's not an apples-to-apples.
Well, I see.
Increase.
So if I could ask a quick question regarding the general budget. I noticed that the visitor's center was pulled out separately there, but yet the tourism and so forth is under economic vitality. And I was wondering why that was pulled out for general management?
So we did that in, the, the visitor's center budget that's showing for fiscal '23 was just for utilities, the cost of utilities associated with that building. And so in fiscal '24, we consolidated facilities costs, including utilities. And so that, what was showing in 1H was rolled up to 1E in fiscal '24.
Okay. I'm wondering why that isn't under economic.
Economic vitality. The, 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 the building-related costs to all buildings, for the most part, we're, we're trying to move to a centralized management of facilities. So utilities and, and building maintenance costs for any town building, we are moving those to facilities administration. So the, the Personnel Cost associated with the visitor's center is showing in economic vitality, but the building cost is showing in facilities.
Okay. Which leads me to one other question, which is I saw that you were moving towards consolidation for facilities. With the exception of public safety, isn't there facilities still built into their respective budgets?
It's not, right? There is a very minimal amount of maintenance for, for public safety in the public safety budget.
Right, very small.
Because you pulled out the separate buildings, the two stations?
Yes.
Yeah. So that's, that's, so that's not in, that hasn't been consolidated into facilities management? Because it appears under the public safety budget? I'm just trying to understand how far we've gone with this consolidation.
There is an amount that we left in public safety building because there's costs that are critical to public safety, like the telecommunications and the things like the ear cards, which is critical for, for them. So we left that under their control to make sure that that gets paid timely and we have no disruption to service to public safety.
I think if you compare, there's not a page number, but if you look at line 6C and you look at what the budget was in fiscal '23 versus '24 and '25, you can see what was pulled out. And there, there's only a small portion of what had previously been budgeted there left in that line because the rest has been rolled into facilities.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we, Finance, moving on to Planning and Land Management. Slight increase overall in that division by 5%. Public Safety, overall, the increase was 1%. And why that looks a little lower in percentage compared to other areas is because the fire is one of the only contracts that we do have settled. So that's an actual true number that's associated with their budget. Where Police is a contract that's one of the five that are up for, that are up enough to be renegotiating. Human Services, 1% increase there. Public Works, 3% increase.
Anthony, I have a question.
Sure.
Both in Publics, Public Works and back in general government, I see that we're decreasing spending on parks and trees. And back in general government, parks and playgrounds. So here it's, we're down $120,000. And then in general government, we're down 106. So total, we're spending almost a quarter million, or budgeting less than, about a quarter million dollars less. Is there a reason for that? Did it go somewhere else or are we?
No, you know, some of that, I'm not sure if it was left over from facilities. I'd have to, I'd have to dig into that and would some of the additional futilities cost be moved out of there for the decrease?
Yeah, that's a lot of money.
Yeah, I can, I can look.
We're not planning on a reduction of, of services. The, what, what is showing in Public Works, that is the budget they presented and how they allocated the funding that was provided. So I think there's some adjustments in what's being accounted for in the different Public Works divisions. On Parks and Playgrounds, some of that has gone into facilities, but, but the Parks and Playgrounds budget is right now being managed by Public Works and, and facilities. So I think there's, there's movement in a lot of places because we are trying to reorganize so things make more sense and there are, there are better controls. So I know it maybe looks.
That makes sense that you can take it out of general government and move it over to, to Public Works. It's just that we're still budgeting a lot less in total than we, we did in prior years. Well, actually, yeah, last year. And you know, it's funny, when I go to the Trails Committee meeting, I hear about all the trees we're losing over the year. Like we've lost well over, close to 100 trees this year because of all of the storms we've had. So I'm just wondering if we're keeping up with things like that.
We'll be happy to take more money into Public Works.
Alan will be very happy.
It's, so when you reorganize, the, the categories are no longer comparable year by year.
Well, it's, it's harder.
It's harder.
Yes.
Figure out what's happening.
It's harder.
Yeah.
But that's no reason, that's.
Plug in for Parks and Trees.
But that's no reason to stick with categories that don't make any sense anymore, just because it ruins your bookkeeping.
No, I think the point I want to make is that I, I think we still want to, you know, be maintaining our, our parks and trees.
Yeah.
That's my point.
So unclassified, we have a decrease of actually 22%. And that was attributed to bringing down, we just needed to balance the budget. So we, in changing with the health insurance, we have more opportunities with Meyer to provide wellness for employees. So we reduced that by $50,000. And then the other big driver there is we decreased the salary reserve down to $581,000 and change. Certainly it's tighter than what we'd like, but we had to get to guidelines.
The salary reserve fund, is that for contracts yet to be negotiated?
Correct.
And that's a million and a half?
581.
Oh.
Yeah, I noticed that's, that's less than last year?
Oh, 5825, okay.
Why, why is it less than last year?
More.
Go ahead.
More contracts?
So last year we were working, or this year, we were working with the implementation of the new class and comp plan.
Right, right, okay.
But again, I think the, the point is we are bringing a budget that is within guidelines. In doing that, that provided for a million, $33,000 in increase. We had a $515,000 deficit that we are still planning for. There are plenty of areas where we would like additional funding. We understand that there are lots of special projects and work that people would like to support, but we felt that we needed to bring a budget that met the guideline. And this is the best allocation that we are seeing, given what departments have submitted to us. We are not expecting a reduction in services out of this budget.
Carrie, last time you gave us an estimate of free cash. Has that changed? You gave us a range.
Yeah, I, I will defer to Anthony on the free cash question.
We're, the town accountant's just finalizing and will be submitting it this week, but it's, we're still looking at about $8 million in free cash.
Eight?
Eight. That was the estimate that we gave to FinCom in November.
And what percent is, is that of our budget? A little less than, what's our budget now, 130 something?
130, 130 million.
I can't do that math.
I can, no.
About 6%? Mark?
So this, I mean, this, we're showing that our debt service in general, the joint accounts, goes from three and a half million in '24 to a little over 6 million in '25. So our debt service pretty much almost doubles between '24 and '25. Is that primarily the remaining bond issue for the middle school?
Yeah, so you're looking at the town meeting appropriation for '24. The town meeting appropriation did not include the new debt service for the middle school that is currently on the fiscal '24 tax bills because the, the timing of when the budget is produced, this, this is not reflective. If you, if you looked at the tax recap and you saw the budget, this is not reflective of the additional debt service that was issued in June of 2022, June of 20, June 2022. It's, it's the timing. And I think the Finance Committee was clear in the FinCom report that there was additional debt service for the middle school coming on in fiscal '24 that was not appropriated in the budget, again, because of the timing of when the, the budget is developed and when we have town meeting and, and when debt was issued.
So that means the 6 million is a catch-up on stuff that had been committed but not spent?
The, I wish I had a whiteboard and a calendar. No, we are, we are not projecting a significant increase in debt service, in exempt debt service for fiscal '25 yet.
Yet, okay.
In other words, we might borrow in June again?
We, we will have to see as we get closer what the, what the cash flow need is for the middle school, whether there's a borrowing in June or whether we're waiting until the fall of, of 2024.
And, and that's about 48 or 50 million to finish the project, maybe?
Yeah, around there, 40, 40 million.
Yeah. Okay. So if it's borrowed in June, then it does affect that next year's tax rate. And if it's not borrowed till fall, we don't see it until another year. Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay. I have a request about the way that debt service is listed in Items A1 and B1. It's called Town. I don't have it right in front of me, but I believe that that is mostly school buildings, the, the elementary school buildings that were still on the.
No. No, A, the, all of the school buildings are in A2 and B2.
Okay.
That CPS, that Concord Public Schools, it's not just the middle school.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
So what is the Town, what are the Town things? I don't remember right now what we borrowed.
For, for the exempt debt?
I don't have it in front of me, whatever A1 and B1.
So A1 is debt service within levy. That, that is the debt service associated with the annual capital improvement plan, roads, trucks.
Okay, okay, roads, all right.
And then B1 is, is the Town exempt debt or excluded from the levy limit. And that, most of that actually is the, the Bus Depot project, which is, which is showing as a Town. The school bus depot project has always been showing as a Town project. And then there's a small utility project that is part of that. But, but 2/3 of that is the school bus depot.
Well, maybe that word Town should be relabeled because it is confusing. I don't know. It's just a suggestion.
Okay, moving on.
Moving on. All right, so overall, the next slide just gives you a little snapshot of the overall budget, so you can see where you're going to be spending your money this year. So in total, 32-plus million is for general government, the joint accounts cost is almost 27 million. Miniman Tech is 1.7. CPS is 46.5 million and CCRSD is a little over 26 million for a total budget of $134 million. The next slide, I, I put in there at Selectman Ackerman's request. It just, wanted to look at what we were projecting as early estimates for state aid compared to what the preliminary cherry sheets that came out last week. We weren't too bad. As far, you know, off slightly, just allocation and little different buckets, but for the most part, we ended up with a little bit more than, a little, around $30,000 off from what we estimated. So we're right there. There's nothing, no big windfall for the Town to worry about what we're going to do with it. So, so we're pretty much within what we figured we'd be. And that's the budget for FY '25.
Thank you for coming in at the guideline. It's really nice to know that when the Finance Committee publishes their guideline, you take that and do the work that you need to do to come into guidelines. We don't, we don't have a lot of back and forth. We can pretty much trust that you're going to do what it takes and I really appreciate your leadership there.
We will do our best, for sure. All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you. What is, what is, what is next?
The Warner Pond.
Warner Pond. So as we've been talking about for a number of weeks, the Natural Resources Commission has been working very hard and really taking a lot of public input on the Warner's Pond Task Force. And they have conducted a set of interviews. They've had a good response from the community and in. from the community, an impressively talented number of Town citizens have volunteered to work for this task force, so it's going to be a, a very talented group, and the NRC is prepared to do their appointments at their upcoming meeting this Wednesday evening. So, it falls to us as the Select Board to choose one of our number to work with this board as a member, as a voting member of the Warner's Pond Task Force. As the liaison to the NRC, I've been following this closely and have provided all of you with copies of the draft, the, the current draft of the charge, which is, I believe, the final draft is in our packet tonight, and so all we really need to do is name one of our representatives. As I mentioned before, I would be willing to take that on as an extension of the liaison role that I have with the NRC, however, if there's another one of you who's rushing to volunteer, I would be more than happy to, to, to share that. And we had some discussion about whether or not there might be an emeritus member of the Select Board, or somebody of that sort, but I haven't, I did talk to at least one person who demurred on that subject, and, and I don't, didn't hear any suggestions from anybody else. So, as it stands, I'm going to say that I would be willing to work with this group and, and continue my involvement with the Warner's Pond issue on behalf of the, of the Board, but we're, I didn't want to assume anything and have, have, up until this point, remained silent about where we were, where we were going to go, looking forward to this discussion.
I thought the charge was great, I thought it was really well-written and balanced, and it's got a good representation. I think you're the best person for the job.
Yeah, I appreciate you stepping forward. I will comment, however, I thought it was somewhat unusual for the committee, for the NRC and the department to decide not to name the, the committee until after the Select Board made their designation of who the person was going to be, when they were ready to do so earlier. But that's just my observation. Yeah, I, I think you're the logical person to do it, Mark, if you're willing. Thank you.
Mark, I noticed that there's an ex officio member of the task force from MCI Concord, are you going to keep that there?
That's a good question. Obviously, ex officio implies that that, that's a role that would involve some information exchange and consultation about the goals, and in some ways, it becomes even more important. As we've already talked about this evening, this, this MCI issue represents a lot of change right in the, you know, immediate vicinity of, of the Warner's Pond environment, and so this area could look quite a bit different in a, in a relatively short number of years, depending on what happens with this opportunity, so I think it makes the work, you know, more important than ever. And we should understand, you know, where they're going and, you know, figure out how it pertains, the, the, the MCI Concord property actually also directly abuts the river.
Did I understand it correctly, that like ninety-eight percent of the watershed that goes into Warner's Pond comes from outside of the abutters? It's, it's a big, it's a big catch.
Mostly Acton, yeah.
Yeah, okay, okay.
And it, it's a huge, it's a huge catchment area, and that's one of the...
It's a huge, yeah, okay. Should I make a motion?
Sure.
Move to appoint Mark Howell to serve as the Select Board designee on the Warner's Pond Task Force for a term to expire December thirty-one, twenty-twenty-four, or at the completion of the work of the task force.
Second.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations, Mark.
Thank you, Mark.
Yeah, thank you for stepping up.
You're welcome.
Okay, that's number nine.
Annual report.
Annual report. I, I only got one set of comments on it, which were, which are entirely acceptable to me, the ones that Mark and Teri's comments, and I, you're, you're looking, you're not...
It's on the other side.
Yeah, yeah, I know, so you're, so I just asked Shannon to just implement those suggestions, although I also had a suggestion, I think I was wrong about the, one about the financing of the new middle school, including Town Special Meeting in February, which I guess I was thinking about a different year, and so...
I have some comments, I didn't send them to you.
Oh, sure.
I saved them.
Good.
The, the termination of the Junction Village assisted living, that, I think that happened the year before, not this year.
Did it?
Yeah, actually it did.
Okay, well, it makes, makes it shorter.
And then we should add that we impaneled the solar, solar task force.
Shannon, you take, you grabbing this stuff?
Right here.
Okay, yeah, okay, I get it, yeah, so...
And then, and then my, my third comment would be, this, this writing here about the residential tax exemption, I think we have to be very careful. I think, we had your original, then we had Mark's, then we had, is this, which version is this?
This is, oh, that is...
The yellow is Mark's, and then I changed, I suggested the blue.
Okay, because the, when it says ten percent of property tax assessments, it, it was really, ten percent of the median tax assessment was given to each property.
Right.
Oh, yeah, okay.
So, it wasn't ten percent of each house.
That's right, but what the wording was before wasn't right either. I forget what it...
Yeah.
It, so, the first sentence, I think we can agree to, adoption of, under the statutory authority of the, of the Board, of a residential exemption of ten percent for FY twenty-four, so that's the year, and that's the percentage that we adopted.
Right.
I think, under this program, the, the wording that I had suggested originally was a portion of property tax assessments are shifted from...
Can I add a word, residential?
Yeah, but I think a portion is really confusing when you've just said ten percent.
No, we're going to take out the ten percent.
Yeah.
It's just, we're going to say a portion.
Because I don't think it actually, ten percent of the property tax assessments would suggest the entire assessment amount that we're assessing the Town, ten percent of that is being shifted, and it's a number that's less than that, because it's not the commercial property, property tax assessments is the entire amount of property taxes that is going against all properties.
Yeah, yeah, but what's confusing is you have the ten percent in the first line, and now you're saying a portion.
Well, that's because, under the residential exemption, we adopted ten percent as the level, which is, as we, you know, without getting too complicated, that's ten percent of the median assessed residential property, that's a number, it's worth about a hundred-and-forty-three-thousand dollars, as we know, but it's a residential exemption of ten percent, that's a...
But for the purposes of this, of, including here, what the percentage is, is not really that relevant.
Well, I, I beg to differ on that. I think that it is relevant, relevant because we have a statutory authority to adopt a residential exemption within a range from five to thirty or thirty-five. So, and we picked ten.
Right.
So, I think it's important to say what we actually did, which was, we chose, we chose to make it ten percent. The, the inclusion of the phrase ten percent later is now talking about a different number, which is total property tax assessment, and that's why, and...
So, can you pick up with a, a portion of residential property tax assessments?
Yes.
Right.
Keep reading.
Okay, a portion.
Put residential in there.
Yeah, I put residential.
Great.
And it is, not will be, so we know that it is shifted from, and I, I had used the word properties, I'm just going back to what I...
I think you have homes assessed, whatever.
Yeah. Homes assessed below approximately two-point-one million to those above that value, so it shifts some of the property tax assessment around that pivot point of two-point-one million. All, and then I, I appreciate Teri's last addition, which is all owner-occupied homes are eligible, and the most significant benefit is to owner-occupied properties with the lowest assessed values.
Hmm?
Good. I think that's good.
Good. All right, so why don't we, Shannon, why don't you edit this, and can you send it to everybody tomorrow, and they can send you back any final comments?
Could I do it?
Okay.
Thank you for putting this together, Henry.
Hey, you know, just doing my job.
Can we also take the opportunity to remind citizens that they have until February first, if they haven't applied?
Well, they're not going to see this report until April.
That's why I'm making this, taking the opportunity to remind citizens.
But not in this report.
Not in this report.
How could we do it? What do you think?
I'm just stating it because it didn't appear in the, in the meeting right now.
I'm just stating it.
Take every opportunity to remind citizens that it's not too late to apply.
No, that's, that is...
We could do that.
We could do that, but I, I think it's worth actually discussing how we can do that. It turned out, when I was taken aback by the fact that there was nothing in the, with the tax bills for February first that went out, I discovered that their Department of Revenue has a limitation on the number of pieces of paper you can put in with the tax bill, and so, and it had already been committed to some other, oh, Finance Committee thing, but I wonder if, would it be possible to, a lot of people are going to be getting mail-in ballots, is it, would it be, could I be excommunicated for suggesting that we might want to put, slip a paper in with the, with the ballots, or is that...
Well, we, we can check to see if that's legally permissible.
Because it would be nice to get a notice out without having to spend the postage for it, but we might be able to even get the, the bridge to run another article on it, but they don't pay any attention to what we say.
Or even in that calendar section on the bridge, it could say, you know, where you have the meeting schedule, you could say, yeah, February first, you know, last day to apply for, or maybe it's January thirty-first.
Why don't we write something like a one-paragraph thing that we could either as put, submit as a letter?
A letter to the editor, yeah.
A letter, or a little something, but if, let's, let's see what happens.
I don't want to encourage procrastination, but on the assessor's page, it does say that the last day to apply is April one, so...
Yeah, I thought it was April one.
People still have, people still have time, but if they want to see this processed for FY twenty-four, which I would remind people means an eighteen-hundred-dollar reduction, if you qualify, of whatever your tax bill would have been, then get it in as soon as possible, and it can be applied to your fourth-quarter bill for FY twenty-four.
Yep, all right, let's see, let's get something done to remind people.
We had, I believe you had asked last time if it was possible to get a sense of who applied at what general level?
I asked that question, and still don't have an answer as to currently, what is the number of people who have applied as of this date? We keep getting the thirty-nine-hundred number from, that's at least a month old, or maybe more, and I don't know if that's changed. And also, I asked whether we could get a breakdown...
Right.
A breakdown of the numbers of people who applied, who fall into each of the slices of value, so we can get an idea of like, how many people under five-hundred-thousand applied, how many people under seven-fifty applied, how many under a million applied, and so on, go up by steps to just get an idea of how it's actually being distributed among taxpayers, and I, I don't think that's, would be too hard to get.
I, I don't think so, after we're done processing the applications, so whether it's thirty-nine-hundred or fifty-nine-hundred, that level of work did not exist before the adoption of the residential tax exemption, and it is being managed by the same number of staff. So, I think we could do something after, sort of an after action, so you can see, but to be updating, trying to produce that while we're trying to field calls, help people with forms, keep people informed, it's, it's a bit of work, so we certainly could do it after.
After, meaning after April first?
After we are finished processing the residential exemptions.
We don't really need this information, and we really don't need it until we're talking in the fall about setting the new tax rates, so...
Yes.
You're having updates all the time, I don't see the value of that.
Although I would like to, I don't think it'd be hard to get a current number of the total number of applications received, which gives you some idea of whether it's moving forward.
We, we can do that, I wasn't aware that you had asked, but we should be able to, to get that number to you tomorrow. I can assure you, the assessor's office is, is talking to a lot of people very regularly, people are applying, and we can get you an updated number tomorrow.
What kind of feedback are they getting, Carrie? Do you know, know that at all?
I, you know, I, I, I don't know, I mean, I think we hear from a, I think, I don't think that we've received a lot of negative feedback, or as much as I think I had anticipated initially.
Okay. You know the calculator that, that we talked about, is that going to be online?
We talked about a simpler way of, of putting something up, and, and I would expect that maybe even this week, and then we will, long-term, work on something that's a little easier to use. We originally wanted just to be able to do a drop-down menu, that, that is a little more difficult to, to implement, given the current staffing.
Okay, I think that will, that will be...
I do know someone who approached the assessor's office last week with a question about their bill, who hadn't applied, and got turned around in one day and was very satisfied, so thank you to the assessor staff for, for the work they're doing, I think they are doing a good job of, of helping people get through this process, and it's appreciated.
That's good to hear.
Yeah, and someone mentioned in the liaison report that the, the ag committee is saying that, Mary, that was you?
Yeah.
So, rent is increasing, and, and that's why there's not as much work...
Apparently, they have rental housing for their workers, their farm workers.
And, and they're thinking that rents are already going up?
Yeah, well, they didn't, they didn't qualify for the residential tax exemption.
And their rental housing is assessed at more than two-point-one-million dollars?
I don't know, that's just what they were saying, I didn't check their data.
Well, I think that was a hypothetical.
Well, renters aren't, renters don't benefit, right?
Right.
So, they're renters.
Is this something that they're speculating and worrying about, or it's really happening?
Well, I did some of the figuring, and it really turned out to be fairly trivial, didn't it, the amount? That even, even if the landlords did pass along the small increase in their taxes, it still was not going to be that much money, and, and, we still, even if we, and we talked about whether or not we ought to consider the Province Town kind of program, which allowed long-term renters to get the deduction, but I think our conversation was that, that, that gave you no guarantee that even if the landlords got the benefit of it, that they would pass it along to their tenants either.
Right.
So, it's...
Well, actually, this has been helpful to me, because the, the thing that they were saying was, is that the property... was is that the property they have for rental for their temporary workers is because they don't qualify for the residential tax exemption, they're having to pay higher taxes. But if they had a calculator, it might do what you were mentioning, Harry, and show that maybe that wasn't the big reason why.
Right.
So...
I think it was, I think it was a talking point against the adoption of the program, rather than something that turned out to be significant financially.
Well, that's my question. Because you said that they're having trouble with worker housing, and maybe that's their perception, or maybe it's real, and that's what I was asking.
It's been one of, it's been one of the standard arguments from the beginning, including the argument that came out of the Lexington study.
Right, that's why, that's why I was saying when Mary made that statement.
That's a good point, Teri, and I don't know.
So maybe next time you guys meet, you can...
Maybe I'll have the calculator.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so I'm afraid we might have to adjourn.
We do. Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.